Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call the monthly meeting, excuse me, the regular tribe weekly meeting of the Board of Assessors to Order. It is Wednesday, September 28. We are in the upper level of Old Town Hall, 1111 Somerset Avenue in Dayton. This meeting is being audio and video recorded for posting on our website and also on YouTube. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Noting the attendance, Mr. William Moore is here, Nancy Gulat, and Mrs. Stephanie Schechter. Eric Easterday may call in during the meeting if he can get a Zoom connection. Agenda item 4A, Review Discuss Act Stonegate Landing Audit Letter. So we have completed the audit of the Stonegate Landing tax account and as the clerk pro tem, Mr. Moore, would you read the draft letter into the record, please?
Sure. And I would say this is not a letter, this is a book. September 4A, Mr. Richard Federoff, here, Mr. Federoff. We have completed an audit of the real estate tax account for Stonegate Landing LLC and have determined that a total of $42,562.14 remains unpaid. This amount was as of September 22, 2022, and with each passing day has increased due to accumulating interest charges. Enclosed, please find a list of parcels that our records indicate that are part of Stonegate Landing LLC housing development. The list shows which parcels taxes have been paid to date and which parcels remain unpaid going back to fiscal year 2021. If you have any questions regarding these outstanding taxes, please contact Mrs. Stephanie Schechter, assessor, at the number listed above. Please advise when these texts will be paid in full to the town. Sincerely, Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the letter attached to the letter, our copies of the invoices? There's a summary. These are, these were the basis for the decision that was made to determine the amount of money owed. So was there any discussion, comments, anything?
About just this letter or the Stonegate in general?
Right now, the letter, but yes, you certainly can make comments about Stonegate. So go ahead.
Just curious, you know, have we heard from them? What's, is there any update in status besides? So this means we're done? We're just gonna send them this and there?
I would think so. Did Mr. Federoff visit?
He visited last week.
And?
And he's waiting for the letter.
Okay.
So he can hand it off, explain. I guess he has also said to the other people.
Able Realty?
That they owe it. So. So I actually have two other copies because I didn't know, because you want it sent certified, right?
The one for Mr. Federoff should go certified. The copies to the treasurer, collector, Mr. Reynolds, a hard copy to Mrs. Easterday for the zoning board, a hard copy for attorney Rossi and for Mr. Cussum, who was, I'm not sure, he's still their advisor, but he should know that. And you can let Mr. Federoff know because he, he said he'd stop by and pick it up. He can come by and pick it up, but the, the original really needs to go certified mail because we want to have a record that it was, in fact, delivered. Now, since Mr. Easterday is not here, do we have any idea when he will be?
He said, because there's some things in here that he is supposed to sign himself.
Okay.
That he did mention that he could come in tomorrow.
Okay.
So.
Okay. So after we act on, on approving the letter and voting to sign it, we'll get it all ready and then you can make those copies. Obviously, keep one in file. I would like one for myself. In case any, there are any questions, I will have something to look back at. At this point in time, once the letter goes out, the only resolution is pay the bill or come in and prove with receipt of payment for everything that's outstanding. And I think Mr. Federoff knows he owes this money, so I don't expect we're gonna see payment receipts. So.
I'd like to move that we sign the letter to Stonegate Landing.
And I'll step down and second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion unanimous.
So you want to see between the sign?
Yeah, go ahead and sign it and I will also sign it.
Very tiny area to sign.
I didn't even think of signing. I thought it was just.
Oh, something like that. Oh, yeah, we would sign that. Definitely. Okay, what's next? Rollback tax for Arujos.
So this, this is what, the rollback of the five years. And then the letter that's gonna go out to them removing the solar portion from their chapter.
Okay, so we're cutting out a portion. Obviously, the land is bigger than just the solar farm. So they're just cutting out a portion that in effect is the solar farm?
Yes.
Okay.
So.
So there's two different ones, D and M and Arujos. Those are the owners on it.
So this is not 1050 Williams, right?
Oh, no, no. No, this is the land behind the Arujos farm building and that. And the reason why there were two is because even though the land is contiguous, there are two owners. So for tax purposes, pilot agreements, everything. It's two.
Where's 1050? Where is that located?
That's Reed Brothers.
That's.
Which is further up the street?
Further north.
Just here.
The farm, former farm stand where.
Right, 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 okay.
Something or.
Yeah.
Constantly get these two confused. Okay.
Don't feel bad. We've got, we, the Stormwater Committee has several cases and the addresses are all County Street and it's like, oh, Pleasant Street. It's who are we talking about? Whose property? So. Any discussion or any questions relative to the Arujos farm, the Clearway solar farm in the rollback tax on two parcels?
No, will we sign them?
I've stepped out and second. Discussion, hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote unanimously.
Do we actually?
Sign the back. You're gonna, the page underneath has a spot for you to sign.
A little folded?
Yeah, in that square.
In the square. Do a big John Hancock.
You can go wherever you want. Yeah, I'm gonna suggest, Bill, that we each sign across from our name. Going forward, put three signature lines unless only the chairman has to sign.
Okay.
Okay? Because if these things get separated, there's no indication that a member of the board actually signed it. Okay, the next one is agenda item 4C, Status of 1050 Williams Street Rollback Taxes. And this is the property on Williams Street that was formerly Reed Brothers, the farm stand, the packing shed, and then it was the.
This is the one they wanna put the gym into.
Yes, yes. So.
It's just a little visual. And I went into the planning board zoning and picked out a few things. And so they submitted their plan. It is, that is the. And I have some notes, you know, what they're discussing and they need so many parking places that does nothing to do with us, but.
They submitted the plan to the planning board?
Yep.
Okay.
And he got a waiver for some some things on it. I'm not familiar with it. Site plan review, there were some sections he asked for a waiver and he got the waiver. I said, I'm not sure what that entails. So because it's in chapter land, I need to know what we need to, what's, what's the acreage or what, what are we taking out?
Square feet at least.
Something to remove because it's changing use. It's not, now it's gonna be commercial, it's gonna be.
It's a different tax rate. It's gonna be the higher tax rate, too.
So instead of being, you know, they're not doing corn and whatever anymore, they're gonna have a gym in there. So it's changing use, needs to come out. I just don't know what the portion is. So that's kind of where we are with that.
So in order for this to happen through the planning board, they're gonna have to give the planning board a, I'll call it a proper description of example, the the land we just approved, the rollback taxes for Arujos. So that you know the total acreage. So in this particular case, you know the acreage where that building is. And then from that, there has to be a description of how much is coming out of that acreage. Now, it's probably not an acre, but it's gotta be so many square feet because that is what the commercial tax is gonna be based on, I believe. My only question is, and whether you check with DOR or whether they say check with somebody else or Rich. Once we know the area that is coming out of chapter, my question would be if it's square feet as opposed to actual acres. Number one, how do we assess it? Number two, there's gonna be personal property taxes on the content of that.
Which will be from our RRC, our research, no, the ones that go and go from place to place. So they won't be getting personal property tax until.
After January.
Yeah.
If, if this is up and running by January.
Right, so it's all the running. It's not gonna hit the tax roll in January.
All right.
But we'll still be, so we can just convert the square feet into acreage.
A fraction of an acre or whatever it is.
But just go in that way.
Okay, all right.
So I really, it's kind of in limbo until I can find out how much.
Yeah.
Parking lots included and goes back to a certain point. I don't really know, so.
Right, and, and I, as I've said before, I'd like to see a map of, you know, this is nice, but this is describing what they're gonna build. I'm, I'm looking at, you know, the lot and what part portion of this lot is actually going to be in chapter and not.
Exactly.
So I'd like to see a drawing. Like, I don't care if it's the back of the napkin. It's not, it doesn't have to be fancy.
So, so this will continue, if you'll continue to work with the planning board to we give the info, and this will continue on the agenda each month until we are able to act on it.
Okay, that sounds good. So you don't have to do any motions or anything.
Uh, no, it's just, uh, we'll get another staff's report. And then whatever you put on it, if we get the information we need, instead of just status, it's gonna be Review Discuss Act if we can actually take a vote, but we'll see. Agenda item 5A, sign invoices, if any.
Okay, so I might just need to explain this. This is this is a bill that you have already signed back in July. But they, but the accounting department said that it was already paid. But it was FY '22's bill was put into '23. So I got a bill.
Some adjusting entry that's gotta be straightened out.
So they're gonna put it through. So I have to, it's, so I have like the, the previous that you guys signed.
Was, was the money incumbent for '22?
No.
When are the services or what, what are we?
This is, it's a June 30 date.
It's invoices June 1st.
When are the services? Oh, and what is it, what are we paying for?
This is for the RRC to, it's our annual fee for software update.
And they're the ones that go out and do revales? Oh, they do the personal property?
And they do some, they do some valuations on.
So we approved it before the end of the fiscal year?
Right.
But they didn't process it?
Because there's already one out there on the record that was already paid, but it should have come from '22, '23.
How much, how much was paid in '22?
Well, that was $1,500 that should have come out in '22. I don't know what the total, I mean, this, the $1,500 is supposed to be coming out of now.
No, wait a minute. The 1,500 that was paid?
Yep.
They actually paid it?
Yeah.
$1,500 in FY '22 before, before June 30?
No.
When, when was the payment made? No, this is dated 6/29. It's on here to be paid.
Right, that was not this bill. That is the bill that's attached to that one.
All right, so this bill we voted and it got paid in the correct fiscal year?
No. That one, that's.
But the, the date of the warrant is June 29?
Yes, but this is the bill that was submitted and paid in '22.
The invoice is a 2021 invoice? It's a, it's, it's not even FY '22. It's FY '21?
Maybe I pulled the wrong invoice. I don't know. I just know it should have been paid in '22, but they took it out of '23, so now I'm sure.
Can't be the right one. You're gonna have to get us the right bill. Because first of all, if this '21 bill is not paid, that's gotta go to town meeting.
That one's, that's paid. Whatever the bill is, that, that one's been paid. It's my bill.
The bill on this warrant dated 6/29/22, FY '22, got paid in FY '22 or FY '23?
'23.
But how could it? It's dated '22.
I don't know anymore. I'm losing my.
All right.
You're gonna have to all figure it out yesterday.
You're gonna have to go back and research this. We'll, we'll take this up at the next meeting.
Okay. Because they're going to, they were gonna do it, but then money would just have to be kind of shifted.
Well, since we don't have the bill in front of us, it, I can't.
I thought that was the bill, but.
No, that's just '21, so that's definitely not what we're talking about. If there is a June 22 bill and it's the 1,500 that's listed.
They weren't gonna pay it because they said we already paid it. So that's us, that's me saying they're not gonna pay this one until '23. I tried to get it paid before the new year and they said you already paid it. Or it's already been taken out.
All right, we, we, we need to know more details.
It'd be '21 came out in '22 and then that's what.
It sounds to me like we're.
So.
It was probably a year at some point in the past where it flipped over. And therefore, there's a gap. That's probably why.
So, so that probably is right, that '21 bill.
For '21?
Was paid in '22.
If the bill dated '21 was really for work in '22 and they paid it out of '22, that's not a problem. If there is a bill that's dated '22 that's for services in '23, they can pay it in '23. But the question, what you're asking us to, to sign, I don't understand quite frankly.
We've already signed a thing for this. I'm, I.
Yeah, I have copies of stuff, but I.
So when is the work gonna be done?
It's a, it's a, it's a fee. I, I don't know. It should, it probably should say due on 7/1 and then.
Now, this is, all right, it's, it's, it's not, they're not doing work. This is software support.
Right.
So what we need to know from the accounting office or from your own office, if the records are there, back up even further if you can. When was '20 paid? When was '21 paid? When?
Go forward and see what.
What's gonna happen? And see if somewhere down the road, someone paid an invoice in a fiscal year that shouldn't have been paid in that year. But.
What happens in that case?
All right. If it's truly the fee for FY '23, but they send the invoice in FY '22, it can be paid in '23 if that's what the year is that we're paying a support for. But right now, we don't know.
Right.
What it is.
Covering.
We think, we know, we did vote to pay something at the end of June.
Right.
It may also be that if, if, well, we had money in the FY '22 budget at the end of June and it is allowable to pay for that service.
But I didn't cover, sorry.
Well, again, there's too many details missing.
Okay.
The worst case scenario is there is a bill from a previous fiscal year, because we're in '23, that didn't get paid in '22 or whenever and should have been. It can't be paid out of '23. It has to go to town meeting for a vote as an old invoice. But again, whereas the support fee, they may have billed the contract for '23 ahead of time and dated it June, but when somebody look at it, it's, wait a minute. This isn't for, this isn't for the year that just ended, that is ending FY '22. This support is really a contract for FY '23 and that's part of the confusion.
I have, I have to research it. I mean.
All right.
So our accounting department actually keeps track to that level of.
They better.
Know what I'm saying? Of, of each individual contractor and how much we're.
Yeah, I mean.
It surprised me that that even got bounced. I would imagine that it would just be at the end of the year, they'd be over budget and be like, why are we over budget? I'm trying to figure it out.
The, the town accountant has to have a copy of every contract that's issued. So if this company is under contract or however, whatever the deal is with them, the contract should be on file at the town accountant's office, even if it's a multiple year thing that gets renewed. But what we need is the paper trail. When was?
Right.
You know, and if you get in touch with that company, say to them, you know, we have this invoice, it's being questioned by accounting. Would you send us an invoice with detail on exactly the time period this amount of money is for? Because just saying it's for this, because we had a break, we had a change in fiscal years. There is concern about what are we paying for? Did we already pay for this?
Okay.
I would be surprised if the money we paid on that last warrant in June were for support for a year that just went past. Most of them say, yeah, we'll renew the contract for support. It's due and payable July 1. And so what we got is a, a conflict in dates.
Yeah, June 30th.
Yeah, so it's got to, yeah. So I try to get more tell from the company.
Yep.
And then we got something to match against the payments that we voted in, whatever, okay?
Two motor vehicle.
Yep, this is 5B.
Yep.
Oh, this is a bunch of them?
Yeah. People that might have canceled or.
A motion that we sign the payments for motor vehicle and trailer excise.
I'll step down and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Vote unanimously.
Okay, there's, there was no payroll assigned. But I figured I'd leave it on there and see if it comes up.
Just sign the sheet.
Okay, so this is a new commitment for motor vehicle going out, commitment number 5, $43,394. There's a page here and then another page.
So all the payrolls that you need until our next meeting have been signed?
Um, well, I have a, yeah, I have a question about having authorization to sign that payroll that's number, number, it's F on here.
All right, okay, we'll come back to that then.
Yeah.
So this is the, like, overall excise tax for the town?
This is what, um, they're billing out, what we're supposed to be taking in, $43,000 this next batch of.
This is some yearly?
No, we do, we do like every couple of months, so like seven, eight times a year.
And so this is just like a chunk of?
Yeah. Any new registrations and things?
I move that we sign the commitment for the motor vehicle and trailer excise.
I'll step down and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item 5A, sign sewer warrant slash commitment for Aquaria to sell, this, to sell the nation plant.
So I think they get their, it's a separate billing for them.
A lot of money.
Five, $5,100.
What is this in particular? So Aquaria to sell is its person's name?
No, it's, um, it's the Aquaria, the water, again, down the street.
Okay.
Right, yeah, and they, they get a sewer, water, sewer bill.
So it's just a regular bill?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, they, they are tied into town sewer.
Okay, much when we sign the commitment for Aquaria to sell sewer bill?
And I step down and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Agenda item, A, item 5F, Review Sign Authorization Form.
So this is what the form looks like.
Yeah, these, everybody gets these every year.
So I've been signing the payroll cover sheet. You know, I signed everyone's time card and, and the cover sheet, which I break out, you know, days off, you know, all that stuff. But I need something like that to keep signing it because, or you guys have to come in Thursday before.
Okay, so what is needed is for the Board of Assessors to vote to designate a person to sign the payroll. And it can be you. But there should also be a secondary person appointed. What we did on the finance committee, I think we got one bill a year for dues. Oh, they used to reimburse me for my travel. So Mr. Swatz, the chairman, was nominated and I was the second signatory and we actually had a third one so that if he was out, I was not gonna sign my own travel things. We had another one. So what we need is a motion to, we can continue to have her sign, but a member of the board should be the second signatory so that if she's out, Lisa or Val can call and say, we get a payroll that needs to be signed and Stephanie's away and we need somebody to come in and sign this.
I'm, I'm confused in that. I thought we, I've seen many payroll, it's on our agenda. We, we sign for payroll every meeting. All right, what is this?
You sign for your payroll, which sounds kind of funny, but every week by 10 o'clock on Thursday, I have to have the payroll in.
And it has to be signed?
For my, my office.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So I was having you guys sign. Remember, I bring the sheet in and you guys will all sign. You're not supposed to do that.
Your department.
Round your pound, pound.
Yeah, it's called, department heads are supposed to sign their own payroll or a committee or a board. But obviously committees and boards aren't like department heads who are here all the time.
Right.
So. And, and in the example I gave, Finclam doesn't have a department or support staff that could be designated. So that's why we did it, the way we did it, but so that's what we need to do is.
And it can just be specifically for payroll because it says bills and this and that. I'm fine with the way we do things. I don't need to, you know.
Well, the thing with the bills is you should sign the bill saying we did receive this box of paper clips.
Yeah.
Whatever. And then it goes on the cover sheet, which is what we sign, listing all the bills that are being paid at that time. So that, that works okay. Problem with payroll, it's a weekly thing and it has to be done, so it's not like you wait three weeks.
Right.
Okay.
So what do we need to do?
Make a motion to, I would say, appoint Stephanie as the designated person and with a, a member of the board to be.
Why not all the members?
Oh, we can do that and whoever's available.
Yeah, whoever's available.
That's fine. Yeah, that works. Because I think Valerie used to have, she'd be able to sign the payroll for Carol, but.
Well, I, I think now that the structure in that office has changed in that the full-time assessor is not an elected official, is more like the department head, okay? But the backup will be, any member of the Board of Assessors can sign.
That's good.
Right?
Yep.
So this is just for, um, the people in your office, it's not for you, correct?
I'm on that also. I mean, I have to sign my own time card.
That sounds nothing. I'm sure you're fine.
I mean, it's really, it's just thirty-five hours a week. Did you work it? This is what time I took. It tallies up and that's.
So it's a time, yeah.
It's just.
Time card.
Yeah, it's just the, the cover sheet to all the three time cards that are.
But just for the sake of discussion, you and me, uh, what if you, can you put down, I worked, uh, five hundred overtime hours?
Probably, but it would be sent back, sent back in our time.
With a question marks and exclamation.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Uh, we're not into fence viewing yet, Jim, no.
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
I don't want to hear.
So that's when this would turn up, yes.
No, no, but you seem at the point I'm trying to make.
Yes, I do.
I don't think, I think it feels wrong to be approving your own pay. Although we do it, but we're at least public and, you know, recorded and such. Because, you know.
Yeah, I, and I certainly understand it. But I actually did it as a selectman, which is what we do. I think, I think the thing is there are enough checks and balances in place. She, and she's physically located in the building. If she were on the road all the time, I can see people questioning, did she really work these hours or whatever? So, but I understand your point, yeah. And it's one of the few places in municipal accounting you can actually sign for yourself. Okay?
All right.
You can run a little audit and make sure there's no going in or.
No, but by the same token.
Please, please don't misunderstand.
No, I'm not. I, I know you by now. I know how you are by now.
I'm just thinking through, like, it could be somebody else, you know, it could be, you know, Jim, he's, he's awful. He write his own hours and. But not you, you're.
No, not me.
So, uh, you need a motion to, uh, so I move that we, uh, authorize, uh, Stephanie to sign the payroll for the assessor's office that the members of the Board of Assessors be noted as alternates.
And I'll step down in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. So when you fill out that form, uh, we've got to sign it, probably Eric.
Department head, board committee member.
You know what? The three of us will sign it across the bottom.
Here?
We will, yes, the three of us will sign it.
In this section, right?
Yep, down here where it says, uh.
Department head, board committee member.
Yeah, approval, so the three of us will sign it. So when you fill in the top part with your name, just put alternates, approved, and list the three of us.
Okay.
Okay, and in no tensions, any member of the Board of Assessors can sign in Stephanie's absence, okay? That'll work. Uh, agenda item five G, tax collector sign-off on tax status form revised. Okay, so this is the one that we've added, the Mass General Law.
I don't know if that's how you want it.
No, that looks, that looks fine. Pretty clear.
I put the little asterisk near the. I'm sure.
Yeah, actually, this, this actually applies to you. This actually applies to you. Are you aware that, you know, we're, we're making clarification that if there's any taxes due for any reason, there will be no.
Any, any money, not only taxes, any money to the town.
We have the by, the law that we.
In accordance with MGL?
Yes.
Yeah, we have the.
Look at the form here, Jim. We decided to add that so that there wouldn't be any questions.
Okay, that's fine, sure. Yeah, it's to cover.
So it's good, um.
What we need to, uh, we should make a motion to approve.
I move to approve the updated stacks, access status application.
I'll step down in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Um, Chairman, uh, five H, Chairman to sign renewal forestry applications for Shaw.
So we're not doing this because Eric's not here.
Well, wait a minute, who is Shaw?
Um, Raymond Shaw, he's just a gentleman town that has lots of acres that are in chapter, and this is just a renewal. His ten years were up, so we had to have forestry program renewed. I mean, you could take.
We can vote to renew it, which would authorize Eric to sign it. Since we're looking it back.
Right, yeah, that's fine with me.
So this, Mr. Shaw's land is forests and he's had it in a chapter for ten years and because he's reaching the end of the tenth year, he has to apply again?
Yes.
Is it another ten years?
Yep.
And yet, does he have to have a forestry program?
Yep.
That's what's attached, okay?
There's a map and I don't know if it's like all the details. It was really more of the gist of it and have that thing signed, but.
Um, it tells you the book and page. Where's it actually located?
There.
Let's tell you something.
Looks like maple trees, right? It's Maple Street. Okay.
Okay.
So it's that rectangle? Seventy-three point nine.
This, this is two different ones.
Yeah.
Probably a different one in there.
Yeah, they're two separate.
Oh, Mr. Shaw has two parcels?
Got a few.
Oh, oh, so.
You should be able to see the same thing, I think, over there.
This is, uh, personal field.
Oh, this is off Tremont. Okay, so the one.
Yeah, it's personal fields.
Oh, the, the Little Lee, the Lobes complex? Oh, okay, and this is off of Tremont. Uh, just before you get to Williams.
Okay.
And I believe this land up in here belongs to the town of Dayton, because I know Tommy told me they have a chunk up there.
So my feeling on this is that this is just a rubber stamp of the way, formality, the way things have always been.
Yep.
And lots of.
And then when we do that, one goes back, one goes to the state, one goes to the forester. So it's like, yes, well, he has to officially sign each copy and then we have to.
Okay, so we can vote to do this, and when Eric goes to the office, he can sign this and we'll be, we'll be done with it.
So did you have to do that with this too? For him to sign when he goes to the office?
Yes.
On this one?
Well, when you give somebody authority to sign, I know we talked about the payroll, because we sign the warrant invoices and that. But if there is some document that you've signed that is not a contract, but they want you to sign, always ask, should I sign this or should this go to the, the, the board, okay? But technically, when you give that sheet, anyone can sign. All right, there's the prime sign designate, and then you have the others as backup, okay?
So, um, I, I motion that we approve Eric to sign the Certificate of Chapter sixty-one, sixty-one A Forest Lands for Raymond Shaw.
Located at?
Located at.
So this is the place on the map?
Is the.
The address.
The address of the actual property. Zero Maple Street, map one lot four dash four, or twenty-two ninety-five, twenty-two point nine five acres, and this should be similar. And same. And seventy-three point nine acres, which is map three lot four.
Tremont Street, yeah.
Tremont. Tremont, you say Tremont.
In Boston, it's Tremont. They used to correct me all the time. And they will, you come to Dayton, you make sure you say it's Tremont. I'll step down in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so it's unanimous, so, okay, so more good stuff for you.
Oh, yes.
Uh, any public input, uh, on Book of Assessors? Hearing none, a correspondence, item seven, email from Blue Wave Solar regarding new laws of dual use, agricultural production and solar production, uh, happening concurrently. No, that should be simultaneously.
Hey. That was my big word.
The difference between the two. So, but I, I would like to comment on this, uh, because I read, uh, the letter and I read the law. Um, and what was the word? Uh, qualified. There's a very important word in there, qualified. Um, if these people want to have a dual use, they need to have it qualified by the D O E R. Um, which means the, I believe that the email sent to us was sort of, do you have a copy of the email, perchance? I believe the email said something to the fact of, oh, there is this new law, we signed in and, oh, it's going to be chapter sixty-one A.
The letter?
Hmm, yeah, I think so, yes. Uh, here, it says, please note, as a consequence of this legislative change, land identified as zero Tremont Street, Tremont, uh, Dayton, Mass, uh, parcel, blah, 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 will remain in chapter sixty-one A classification. It's not that simple. You need to go to D O E R, I believe they said something about, uh, so University of Massachusetts or something like that. You've got to go through a program, you've got to have, you know, show your solar, so show your agriculture and get it all approved. Then you can come to us and we will put it in chapter sixty-one A, but I would like to just, unless you have any.
Uh, no, and my comments are, when I saw the, the request and everything that went with it, uh, what I said to Stephanie was, we can't do anything with this because first of all, there have been too many twists and turns with this whole situation. I realize there's two property owners. I realize that, that there have been problems, more problems with one property than the other as far as taking it out of chapter and putting it back in chapter. No, we don't want to do that. And the fact that there was discussion about a letter and what it was, uh, I'm looking at this saying this makes no sense at all. So if you would get back to um, Mr. Thomas.
Thomas Reed.
Reedy Esquire. Uh, first of all, we're not going to, uh, tell them what to put in a letter to us. He's being paid to do this, and if he doesn't have the information, they need to get an attorney that does, because of the twists and turns with this whole situation. He needs to know exactly what, uh, Mr. Moore just said. There is a process they must go through. And we need copies of all of the documentation that approves this. Okay? And once all of that is complete, then I would think their attorney would have enough information to write a letter to the Board of Selectmen and say, this is what the story is. I don't see us preparing a letter or approving a letter. Excuse me, Board of Assessors. I don't see us coming up with wording for a letter for something they want to do. Because clearly they haven't done, according to the research Mr. Moore did, they haven't done what is necessary anyhow. And this is like another shortcut, which we know based on what Mr. Moore said. We can't move on this because we don't have the proper authorization, so, um.
Yeah, it actually says it, right?
I.
Right here. Somebody underlined it, makes proposal, but undergo a review in order to be qualified. Land use citing guidelines and an assessment by the Center of Agriculture, Food and Environment at UMass Anvers. Proposals that pass this review receive a predetermination. So this is what we need as the Board of Assessors to allow it to be put into chapter.
I, it's interesting that we received this and we received that. And there's no evidence that they've complied with, with the law. Uh, and quite frankly, there's no rush. They haven't even broken ground up there. Right? It's not like all the polls are in and the panels are in and all of a sudden, uh, and the other thing we've got to look back at is whatever the last action was, this board took relative to taxes, because you know how we were.
We took it out of chapter.
Exactly, is we've gone around and around and it's like, um, I, I don't know.
Concerns along those lines and I'm, I don't agree with you in that whatever a, a citizen decides they want to do, they want to come in on Monday and put it on in chapter and they want to take it out on Wednesday. It's, it's what they want to do and, you know, there should be a process and we just follow the process. Um, I don't care what, how often somebody.
And that would normally be the situation, except that we already have two approved pilot agreements on these farms, based on the initial presentation.
That's, no, I was clarified on this last time, the pilot agreement covers, uh, personal property, not the real estate.
Except that, we, when we look at the package, when I say the package, I'm talking about this big chunk of land that has two solar farms on it. One of the properties has come in and out of chapter a few times. This particular one hasn't, but this is the one that needs the education, excuse me, the energy compliance statement, so we know what's going on. My concern is that our experience has been that, like, happens with solar farms, there have been a number of individuals involved with this two-farm project that come and go, and when that one goes and the next one comes on, it's like, what? And it's more.
Isn't, isn't all of this recorded, registry deeds?
Well, it should be.
So there should be a clear trail of whether it's in or out, how much. I still want to see maps, though.
Yeah, so anyhow.
Anything else?
So, uh, I, I guess it's just, uh, some, uh, more homework for Mrs. Scheckter to uh, get back to the gentleman that sent the letter.
It was an email. I just suggest for, reply to the email.
Yeah. Yeah, and just copy us on it for informational purposes and he cites the law, how are they going to comply? And if they've complied, obviously, we need a copy of the documents.
So this, this must be the.
Yeah.
Latest.
Let's see the, uh, minutes.
Yeah. I was trying to see which one, I printed them out and then I.
I don't, I don't, well, I need one to sign if they're approved. Uh, while, uh, Mr. Boy is reviewing those, are there any unanticipated items?
I don't think so.
I don't have anything. We'll see if, if he does.
I have nothing to irritate you with today.
It's all right, I got my little package here.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for, uh, September twelfth.
And I'll step down in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously.
How you sign this, correct?
Yes, yeah, the. You're going to sign the ones for this meeting, though.
Next time.
Yeah, um, so we're coming up on adjournment, uh, hearing nothing else, would you?
Motion to adjourn.
Second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's about nine fifty-nine, according to that clock.
And what time did we start?
Uh, I believe it was nine twelve when I looked at the, uh.